Welcome to the Wednesday, April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, meeting of Thurston County Planning Commission. Thurston County Planning Commission is a resident advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as the Comprehensive Plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners to final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Community members are welcome to observe all planning commission briefings and work sessions. And we will start with introductions to my list.
My name is Eric Casino. I live in the Lacey UGA and I serve at large.
My name is Sandy Kaiser. I live in District Three and represent District Three.
Scott Nelson, District Four.
Charlotte, I live in Timwater and I'm at large for District Five.
I live in and represent District One.
Mary Halverson, District Two.
Bill Fishburne, I live in and serve District Four.
And do we have anyone online? It's Kevin.
I believe Commissioner Passenger is online.
I saw the phone just unmute. We can hear you.
Kevin Peckinger, District Five.
And I am Joel Hanson, representing District Three.
We have an agenda tonight and I would entertain more. Okay, terrific. It's been moved and seconded all in favor.
Aye.
And we have minutes from the March nineteenth meeting. Is there any edits to those minutes that anyone would like? And I guess it takes more than approval.
We need to approve the minutes for a meeting of March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and the audio recording is official record. The budget meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Perfect. Okay, next on our.
I just like to say those are great meeting minutes. Whoever did those up.
Good ones. Yeah. Okay, now we get to public communication. I'm going to script to read and then we'll get right to it. See, those participating in tonight's meeting by Zoom, please choose the raise your hand option to address the Planning Commission. You'll be promoted to panelist or is your turn to speak and be seen. To be seen, please turn on your camera. If you're dialing in, press star nine to raise your hand. Make sure you also choose star six to unmute yourself. The three-minute timer will show on one of the video screens to help you keep track of time and general speaking guidelines for public comment, please introduce yourself, including the address that you reside in the county. Please address the Planning Commission, not the audience or staff. The Planning Commission may not respond to public comments. Speakers are limited to a total of three minutes. The timer will show you one of, on one of the video screens to help keep track of time and there will be exciting music when the three minutes is up. Meeting attendees cannot donate their speaking time to another person. No comments that are lewd and offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature. No comments that are commercial in nature. All materials provided to the county may be subject to release pursuant to the Public Records Act. And remarks on projects that have already had a planning commission public hearing will be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration. Thank you. And I have a list in front of me for the people that have signed up in the room. We'll start with them. And first I have Ron Smith.
Just a heads up, we have a beep now, not place music.
Oh, it does? Okay, terrific, thanks. The non-Luddite.
That's not the Oscar.
Hi, I'm Ron Smith. My address is nine one one nine Otis Beach Street, Northeast, Olympia. And I'm the president, president of a small nonprofit group called Protect Henderson Inlets. We're particularly focused on impacts on the environment. And let me thank the commission for the time to speak. And let me thank you all for your hard work. I know it takes a lot of work to put together a comprehensive plan. So thanks for that. Let me just first mention a little problem that I had today. I went to the website and looked up the current draft and read it and was bothered by some things and sent you all a pretty long email, which you can peruse at your leisure. But then I got an email later, I've sent another email, an inquiry, and got an email from Maya Teples with a link to a completely different draft plan. And so there's some confusion about what the current draft is. And I don't know, I mean, that looks suspiciously like the last drafts me that I commented on a month ago. If we don't know what the current draft is, it's awfully hard for us as citizens to participate. And so I'm assuming that what is on the current website is the current draft. And that's what my most recent email to you addresses. So the gist of it is that I am very disappointed in reading the aquaculture resources section. And I'll just briefly read my opening on my email to you. I'd like to express my dismay at the latest draft proposal for the updated Thurston Comprehensive Plan, specifically the aquaculture resources section, which I've complained about before. The new draft session has some improvements, but still appears to have been written by an industry spokesperson. While some of the spirit of the document can be embraced, especially portions which promote maintaining water quality, the goal of the comprehensive plan should be to protect the environment first, not the aquaculture industry first. Where the goals coincide, that's good. Our goals can be mutual. But please don't be misled by industry rhetoric that suggests that they put the environment first. They place their business interest first. And they do their best to capture the administrative process to promote their own interests, often over the well-being of the environment. The statistics quoted in the aquaculture research sections are convincing that aquaculture is a lucrative industry. Unfortunately, these companies, which are extractive in nature, provide little local benefit. Most of the food, many of the oysters and nearly all the gooey duck are exported. Most of the food is not consumed locally because it's too expensive. They pay little or no tax, that being the aquaculture industry. Look into it. They pay almost no taxes locally. And the jobs that they provide are mostly low paying. So what does it provide to the community and why should we in our rhetoric in the comprehensive plan give them such high priority? And let me just read to you from the current draft here. This is in the first paragraph under community vision. The residents of Thurston County envision a thriving and robust aquaculture industry and take responsibility for ensuring that its potential can be fully realized. Does that sound like it's written like by a citizen? Maybe if you're a citizen that owns an aquaculture company. They also strive to initiate and maintain a constructive and progressive partnership with the aquaculture industry. The aquaculture industry comprised of responsible users of Thurston County's marine and freshwater resource promote wise stewardship of tidelands and other areas associated with their aquaculture activity. So I won't go on, but this is in the current draft as I read it on the website. And you can look at the, I, I sent a detailed of letter suggesting changes to that. And that first paragraph, I'm afraid it's mostly just lined out. So my wish as a citizen of the county and I pay taxes in the county and I live on the waterfront and I do grow a few oysters and I'm not against that being done. I'm not against the aquaculture industry, but my wish is that the environment be placed first and not the aquaculture industry. And for too long, they have been capturing our administrative processes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hook. Next I have Lynn Fitzhugh.
Lynn Fitzhugh, I live in Olympia, Washington. I'm sorry to say that I continue to be very disappointed by how the mitigation plan is being represented into this comprehensive plan. I appreciate that someone spent time working on this crosswalk and at first glance, it looks like, okay, now we have forty-two of the seventy-two items in the plan and that they all have some implementation step. However, when you look at the details, it's very disheartening. There is a lot of repeating same items for numerous action and language like we'll study, we'll assess, we'll propose. Not after five years of waiting what we were waiting for. This is not going to get us to the twenty thirty needs and haste by science and the plan. This is not going to be easy to fix because what it really reveals is the county has not in five years made an actual plan for how they can do these things. It took them two years to hire the climate coordinator. Since sadly, that means that this will have to be figured out after this comprehensive plan is adopted. My best advice to you is to please move the items of the TCMP, which are mostly actionable language into the implementation plan. Not instead adopt this vague and inactionable language, which erases accountability. Some examples. There are two items which pertain to some form of energy audit for residential buildings in the TCMP. In two thousand and twenty-one, when I worked with TCAT, I convened real estate agents who made arguments against performance ratings, but agreed to the stricter energy audit. Language was agreed to, it was given to Pam Graff as part of the collaborative to write up into code language, at which point Lisa partially put the brakes on saying that the priority had to be banning gas, which has been a long goose chase, which has led nowhere. Four years later, neither are done. Last year, the energy audits were taken back up and my understanding is are close to being able to be voted on. This document does not reflect the decision not to do performance standards, nor does it reflect where the audits are at this point in time. The AI language in the right column acknowledges the need to talk to real estate agents, but without cognition that that has happened. Pretty nonsensical to read. There are three items in the TCMP pertaining to trees. One asks the county to maintain its own trees. One asks for tree ordinance to preserve trees throughout the county and one asks for reforestation. You should be proud that you have passed the strongest tree ordinance in the state. Yet oddly, the document does not claim this, but rather says that you will set tree canopy goals. Okay, good. But some, something that the consultant placed extraordinary powers on, up to ten percent of the savings in the plan, was planting more trees. It has been widely acknowledged that it is not possible to plant a number of trees called for in the plan. Nonetheless, that does not mean dump the item. There are thirteen items listed under AB one reforestation, but not one of them says trees will be planted. There was a lot of thinking about figuring out where to plant, encouraging others seeking funds. Baffling us with words does not cover over that in twenty years, there is not a commitment to plant even one tree. This is just so wrong.
Thank you. So it's Hugh. And next signed up, I think this is Betsy Norton.
Hi. My name is Betsy Norton. I live in Olympia and I'm, I have been kind of indebted, so I'm shooting from the hip a little bit here, so please bear with me. I haven't had a chance to review the entire plan and I haven't been able to look at the full implementation plan, but I do plan to. Regarding climate change and sea level rise, I urge you once again to update your data because the current, the latest greenhouse gas, our failure to meet the reduction goals means that we're no longer on the intermediate scenario. We're on one of the high-rise ones. And that, that means a rise of four and a half to six and a half feet by twenty-one hundred, not two. So that may change some of the considerations that you make in terms of land use. Speaking of not meeting the greenhouse gas goals, the economic development chapter is apparently out of scope for update. Is that correct? Which makes no sense to me, particularly when we're considering meeting any of the greenhouse gas mitigation goals or any of the other environmental, environmental goals that we want to set. Commercial and industrial entities admit more than twice the greenhouse gases of the residential sector. And when we're talking about land use and these different things that we're going to put in place in the climate chapter, none of that stuff's in economic development. It needs to be there. Businesses and the industries need to be held accountable for that. And if you need to put in tax incentives or whatever it is you would need to do to get them to clean up their act, that's important. Secondly, the economic growth, so I think you should consider the ecosystem services that are lost when you expand economic growth, particularly when they do, and these are industries that suck up water, suck up power, particularly that power constraints, and also introduce a lot of greenhouse gases from their transportation in terms of trucking fleets. You know, those are all huge impacts on the environment. There may or may not be any good jobs coming out of there and, and we have considerable habitat lost, forest loss on the way. All that stuff needs to be thought about when you're thinking about bringing these guys in. There are some people who say you should take a waste-first approach, meaning you look at all the pollutants and all the things that come out back in these industries before you consider putting them in place so that you can, you know, sort of constrain where they develop, how they develop, change the development codes so that they have less impact on the environment. I just feel like we're entering a period of scarce, scarce resources and we're entering a period where everything is becoming much more concentrated and things are closer together. And so we need to put a lot more thought and creativity into how we develop and help. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is Paris McCloskey.
Thanks, everyone. I'm Paris McCloskey. I live in Olympia, Washington. I'm here representing Thurston Climate Action Team, being the organizer there. And first of all, I want to say thank you for the new draft of the comp plan since the March Planning Commission meeting. Our community members and TCAT were present to advocate for incorporation of the Thurston Climate Action, of Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan actions into the comp plan update. My analysis of that new rework chapter of the implementation plan, the climate chapter specifically, I found that forty-two of the seventy-two TCMP actions are now partially or fully represented in the climate chapter of the implementation plan, which is a big improvement since the, you know, even a month or so ago. So regarding the climate crosswalk, again, many of the TCMP actions are incorporated into this document. However, the interpretations of their incorporation are often unclear, vague, or incomplete. Here's an example of what I'm talking about. TCMP action B four dot one one requires smart appliances and new construction, especially water heaters that control timing of demand. And then the comp plan corresponding action E R O S dash two dot A dot one three encourage the use of no and low water use appliances and fixtures, particularly in conjunction with septic systems to reduce the potential for groundwater contamination. So my notes on that are that this covers some water-related appliances mentioned, not all smart appliances and not water heaters. Also, the TCMP action uses the word require, whereas the comp plan action uses the word encourage. So finally, there is nothing in the comp plan action that mentions new construction. So this is just in, in reference to this one, this one piece of the crosswalk as an example. So the example illustrates the way that this TCMP action and others are currently represented in the comp plan draft. In many cases, the crosswalk is written in a way that could include the corresponding TCMP actions or it could exclude them. TCAT is advocating for more clear, direct, and accurate representation of the TCMP actions in the climate crosswalk and ultimately in the comp plan update. We're currently working on a thorough analysis of the crosswalk with notes for the items where we need to see improved language that will better represent the TCMP actions. And I also do want to state that, got a few seconds left, that I did see improvement though. So I do want to reiterate that since the last time I saw that a lot of actions were incorporated and that's a good thing.
Next signed up to speak is Tom Crawford.
Good evening. My name is Tom Crawford. I live at one zero zero one six Lookout Drive Northwest in Olympia. That's actually in the unincorporated county. And I also am a board member and president, board president for Thurston Climate Action Team. So Paris and I are working together. So I want to also thank staff and commission members for their work to ensure that this year's comprehensive plan update brings forward the actions contained in the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan and gives county staff the direction necessary for timely and effective action for achieving the time-bound goals for twenty thirty and twenty fifty contained in that plan. You've made significant progress in incorporating the TCMP actions into the comprehensive plans implementation section. The crosswalk between TCMP and the comprehensive plan is also appreciated. At the same time, based on the crosswalk, I'll echo some of the things that Paris and others have mentioned. It does appear that there are still several gaps in that effort. Here are some examples. B two point one, item B two point one in the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan requires energy performance ratings for commercial structures be disclosed so that owners, tenants, and prospective buyers are informed before making purchasing or rental decisions. So this is for commercial structure. The cited item from the implementation plan in the crosswalk addresses residential buildings, but not commercial buildings. There is an item cited from the goals objective section that includes commercial buildings, but that, that item is also too vague. An implementation item specific to commercial building energy disclosure would be, I think, very helpful. Item T four point three in the TCMP reads, and this is in the transportation area, identify and implement first last mile both type of conclusions to connect neighborhoods without the population to support those routes, these routes, and adoption. Engage homeowners associations for representation feedback and any extension service should include an analysis of climate impacts to ensure the program does not result in an increase in greenhouse gas emissions. The crosswalk points to several goals and objectives in the transportation chapter, comprehensive plan, the focus on public education, supporting a wide range of public transport programs, et cetera. And again, uses very generic and vague language, not specifically a climate game. And it would go, it would work directly, we could, I, I think we can more directly address the need to reduce greenhouse gas emissions using transportation policy and actions if the TCMP language were included in the implementation plan as an IP item. And so finally, I'll just wrap up by say, there are a variety of other items that we believe could be significantly improved. As Paris mentioned, we plan to work on those and get specific details to you on those to make it more specific, more actionable, so we do get action in a much more timely way than we have thus far. Thank you again for your work on this and for your commitment to work with us on this critical component of the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. One last person signed up to speak and it's Charlotte Persons. And after that, I'll give anyone else in the room that wishes to speak an opportunity.
Persons, nine three glass Avenue, Northeast Olympia. I'm representing only myself today, not Black Hills Auto and Society. I'm commenting on the crosswalk as so many others have passed. And I'm happy with it. And I asked the planning commission to direct staff to fix the language in the draft implementation plan, if possible, before the public hearing on April twenty-fourth. First, the crosswalk is inaccurate. For example, for six point B one to the one, which describes a goal for commercial buildings. The second part of this is IP dash C L back fourteen. But that has nothing to do with commercial buildings. It is about home residences. It needs to be removed from that part of the plan. And this is just one of many examples of inaccuracies in the crosswalk. Second, the crosswalk has many implementations, actions whose language is so vague that the actions can be taken as possibilities, not actual commitments. One solution to these two problems is to use the clear language of the Thurston County mitigation plan actions in the mitigation implementation plan as the, this commissioners asked the staff to do in their last meeting. Those actions are concrete actions that county has already agreed to undertake when it signed the TCMP in two thousand and twenty-one. So they could just be moved right into it. Third, the crosswalk refers to many implementation actions as regional actions or staff comments in the crosswalk state that the action should be at the regional level. Some actions will be better coordinated and easier to implement at a regional level. But unfortunately, at the regional letter level, the pace of TCMP implementation has been glacial. Thurston, two thousand and forty-five applies only to our county, not the region. And I want to be able to hold Thurston County accountable for accomplishing actions that will lead greenhouse gas reductions. One possibility is for the county to take individual action as a pilot or exploratory case for regional actions. Another suggestion is for the planning commission to decide for which regional actions Thurston County will take, county will take the role of lead coordinator. These county-level rules and regional actions can be written into the implementation plan and will better allow us citizens to hold the county accountable for regional goals and actions.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Please come to the podium and state your name and address. Thank you.
I was first here and forgot to sign up. Greetings, Commissioner. My name is Phyllis Farrell and I live in the Sunwood Lakes neighborhood in unincorporated Thurston County. Thank you all for your hard work and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight on behalf of the South Sound Sierra Club Group, representing approximately twenty-four hundred members. I'll be commenting on just the water resources and management policies and actions. The League of Women Voters Water Study indicated Thurston County's water availability will not increase, so water conservation will be necessary to provide for the expected population increase. It is necessary the county adopts strong water management policies and actions. We reviewed the draft, Chapter Nine Comp Plan Policies for Groundwater and Aqua for Recharge Areas. These policies are very comprehensive, but I would suggest the addition of a policy that agriculture water rights should not be transferred for use by rural residential development. I know this would need to be a collaboration with the Department of Ecology on this, but we need to protect, preserve, and promote agricultural uses locally. Agriculture water rights should be retained for agriculture. Rural residential development should be limited for climate and water reasons and to protect agriculture uses. We'd like to commend the staff on the updated implementation plan for water quantity, quality, and stream flow restoration. These actions reflect input from the public advocating for the inclusion of the Thurston County Mitigation Plan Act actions adopted by the county in two thousand and twenty-one. IPLU dash eighteen, to develop an integrated water resources management plan, addresses several of the TCMP actions, but we recommend the specific action verbs in the TCMP actions. I would like to comment on IPLU dash fifteen, to establish a voluntary well monitoring program. Considering the importance of wise use of available water and the need to really ascertain actual usage, I suggest the county consider a mandatory installation of water meters on permit-exempt wells using a bulk county purchasing and installation program. My HOA did this several years ago and the bulk purchase and the HOA contracted installation reduced the costs and made them manageable. To make the situation palatable to taxpayers, costs could be added to property tax bills spread over several years. Data from meters will help owner, homeowners conserve and help the county with water quantity management based on actual data. New exempt wells should have established limits of three hundred and fifty gallons per day per household. We would also suggest the inclusion of TCPM, the Thurston County Mitigation Plan We would also suggest the inclusion of TCPM, the Thurston County Mitigation Plan Action W two dash ten, re-water reuse, and W two dash seventeen to require the use of gray water in new residential and commercial buildings. I'm out of time, but thank you for your consideration, and I'll also forward written comments.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else in the room like to address the planning commission tonight? Okay. I will move to the folks attending online. And the first hand I see raised is Karen Mesmer. Can we transfer her to a panelist, please?
Hello, planning commissioners. My name is Karen Mesmer. I live in Olympia. Thank you to the planning commission for the volunteer work that you do. I know how much effort this takes. I've done it myself for a number of years. I volunteer for the Thurston Climate Action Team. I want our county to take action to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. We can't wait to study and consider actions at length, and those are some of the words that are in the crosswalk. Encouragement is not enough. We need to commit to actions with clear language. There are specific things we need to do, and much of that has been adopted by the county several years ago in the climate mitigation plan. That plan was developed with extensive public outreach and research. It has community support. One of the important actions the county can take is to make zoning changes to further reduce development outside of the urban area. This will reduce transportation emissions, which is one of the largest parts of our emissions profile. The language that is in the crosswalk does not speak strongly enough about this. We need to commit to reducing emissions. That means we need to commit with strong language to specific actions. I agree that there has been progress on the, with the crosswalk. However, there is much more to do. It will mean doing things differently and making some changes to how we. It's not business as usual anymore. If we don't make those changes now and plan for them in our comprehensive plan, we will have much more dramatic changes we'll need to make due to the impacts of our changing climate. So please work on getting very much more specific and adopting the actions that are in the climate mitigation plan into the comprehensive plan. Thank you for listening to the public this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Mesmer. The next hand I see raised is Mary Ann Tompkins. Great, she is being moved to a panelist. If you unmute yourself, Mary Ann.
Yeah, I have to keep my camera off because I have limited broadband here. So you, you won't be able to hear me at all. So good evening, commissioners. Thank you for letting me speak. I, I want to start with the fact that we have a lot of executive orders that are coming down, and one of them is allowing more timber cutting on protected national land. And conceivably, the Environmental Species Act could be overruled by invoking emergency exemptions. And, and why do I bring that up? Because what we're doing locally in the community and our county is, makes a difference. We have control over our choices, at least for now. So I don't want to repeat everything that's already been said. I just do want to say that I agree that we need very clear language in the comprehensive plan. There appears to be very little actionable language. And maybe I'm wrong, but please make sure to put all the actionable language from the climate mitigation plan into the comp plan. The other thing I want to mention regarding afforestation is that it's really great that there's a long list for planning over the next twenty years. But as Lynn Fitzhugh mentioned, there isn't anything in there for planting trees. And, and that needs to be added. I also finally want to say kudos to Thurston County for implementing one of the strongest tree ordinances in the state. Thank you, thank you, I'm so proud. But it's not listed. So please list the tree ordinance under A six dot nine, if you would. And I missed completely telling you that I live in unincorporated Thurston County. So there's that. I want to thank you guys for your service, for volunteering. I really appreciate it, and thank you for my time to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Tompkins. The next name that I can read on the list is Teresa Jennings. And she's being moved to a panelist now. There she is.
Yes, hello. My name is Teresa Jennings, and I live in the UGA, east of Lacey. So in the lead up to the passage of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, TCAT went to each jurisdiction with a list of early actions that could be taken while awaiting the passage of the plan. TCAT was told either we already did it, or we want to wait for the whole plan. Well, one of those was item B two point three, where the county was to install LED light bulbs in its own buildings and streetlights. Now, five years later, this is not marked as accomplished, but says currently in progress. What this means is that even though an LED pays for itself in its first year in savings and produces saving every year afterwards, the county has elected instead to replace the older energy sucking bulbs as they die. I cannot tell you the despair I feel that this low hanging fruit, easy action item has not even been accomplished five years into the plan. I mean, if we cannot even do the easy things, what hope do we have for making progress on this plan? And for me, this paralyzes the language construction in the comprehensive plan that is shown in the crosswalk, where words are piled up implying action. And yet the words are not actionable words. They are concepts and ideas. What will it take for the county to get serious about the climate mitigation plan? The wheel doesn't have to be reinvented. The TCMP already has robust, actionable language. Let's keep faith with that work that has already been done. Insert the TCMP as already formulated into the plan, into the comprehensive plan. Thank you so much, and I do want to compliment the staff for their responsiveness and promptness to me and getting me a hard copy. It was so much easier to read the crosswalk in hard copy. Thank you.
Thank you. I see one more hand raised, identified with the name Esther. There she is. You'll need to unmute yourself, Esther, and, and.
Okay.
There we go.
The last one.
Here now.
Okay, and again, calling, you know, talking to you about the urgency of adopting this plan immediately with actionable lan, language, as you've heard from the people previously. I had mentioned the last time, there was a growth, limits to growth study that shows we got like ten years to mitigate for the worst of what's going to come. And, you know, this very prestigious and dated study that's been corroborated by the data that's come out since it was, since it was done nineteen seventy two. So we really don't have time. And so all those action items that people mentioned, like the light bulbs and trees should be planted now, and the Soul Smart Program should be implemented now, and tree canopy goals to support stormwater management should be done now and not wait till the end of twenty twenty eight. And all new construction should require climate smart policies, including gray water systems. Well, that can be done now, and really now is the time to do it. So I wanted to also thank you for including provisions for constructing new water storage systems and the incentivizing water metering. Waters are most valuable natural resource and the most threatened, and its preservation, the mitigation of any new development to wetlands and aquifer recharge areas and streams should be our highest priority before anything else is approved. So, and I also had agreed with Phyllis Farrell about the agriculture water rights being reserved for aggies. Any cases, I wanted to say, you know, just rubber whatever everyone else is saying that we need more actionable language in the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Is there anyone else online that would like to address the planning commission? Please indicate so by raising your hand. Okay. I don't see anyone else. So next on our agenda is new business work session number one on the forest canopy assessment.
Going to be, tonight, that's going to be Claire giving that presentation. Claire's online.
Hey. Am I coming through okay? All right, let me get my screen set up here. Okay. Yeah, so we're coming to you tonight to take some time to talk with you about some exciting data that county staff have been working on. We're going to go over some highlights from the new Tree Canopy Assessment Report, which is a project that's currently underway, and that will help us with various programs and processes, decision making in the future. The Tree Canopy Assessment is a study of tree canopy cover in rural Thurston County. This report will include information about where the tree canopy is located, where other types of land cover like grasses and shrubs, pavement, and bare soil are located, and it will have information about areas with high tree restoration potential and analysis of areas where forests are encroaching on prairie habitat. The final narrative report is still in draft form, and we're bringing this to you as early as possible so that we can get your feedback on any important points of discussion that you believe should be included, as well as any ideas you have about how the county should use this information in various decision making processes. The maps you're about to see are highlights from the report, which will eventually include over fifteen maps. Some of the important things to know as we're looking at these maps is that they do not include the cities or the UGAs. This report focuses only on the rural county. Each map is organized into two hundred and fifty acre hexagons, and this gives us a way to visualize the data over a large amount of space, and is not intended to be used for site specific analysis. This means that individual properties don't show up on the maps, but it gives us an idea of what is happening in a larger area. The data itself is based off of LiDAR data that was collected by the University of Vermont with a reported ninety seven percent accuracy. And in the final report, these maps are also accompanied by data tables and narrative analysis. The first map we're looking at today depicts the overall tree canopy coverage throughout the entire rural county. The color of each hexagon on this map represents the percent of tree canopy coverage within that two hundred and fifty acres. This map also indicates other areas in the county that are important factors when considering tree canopy, including areas zoned for long term forestry practices, military bases, Native American reservations, and public forests. The map we just looked at depicts over two hundred and fifty thousand acres of tree canopy in the rural county. And sixty one percent of the rural county is covered with tree canopy, and sixty eight percent of that canopy is on privately owned land. Forty eight percent of the tree canopy is on land zoned for residential uses. The Tree Canopy Report will provide information on other types of land cover as well. And in the packet of maps that have been provided, you can see maps just like that one that show that other type of land cover information, as well as tree canopy in each type of zoning. This next map indicates areas with potential for tree canopy restoration. The darkest shades of purple on this map are areas with the highest potential for tree canopy restoration, which means that there's are less trees in those area, and there aren't competing uses or other competing environmental factors that would hinder tree canopy restoration in those areas. On the next slide, we'll talk about some of the details about how this map was calculated. So the factors included in the calculation for restoration are the absence of current tree canopy, the current land use or other designations on that land, and the presence of indicators of prairie habitat like prairie soils. The highest potential areas on that map have very little tree canopy and no competing land uses or habitats. Competing land uses might include long term agriculture designations or prairie designations. Long term forestry was also not included on that map as the tree canopy is continuously going through a process of management in those areas as they're harvested. The lowest potential restoration areas are those areas that already have a very high tree canopy coverage and therefore don't need restoration, or areas that are designated for agriculture or which have prairie soils. In the next few maps, we'll be diving more in depth into the relationship between our tree canopy and our prairies. But the reason that prairie areas were not included as high potential restoration areas here is that encroachment of coniferous forests, especially with species like Douglas fir, onto prairies threatens protected species like the Oregon white oak. So as I just mentioned, the relationship between our prairie habitats and our forests is really important for us to understand. This map helps us do that by helping visualize where forests have encroached onto prairie soils. When looking at this map, it shows two main pieces of information. The color of the hexagons indicates the presence of tree canopy coverage. The greener the hexagon is, the more trees there are on it. And the tan and light colored hexagons do not have as much tree canopy cover. The size of the infill of the hexagon indicates the amount of prairie soils that are found in that area. If the hexagon is very large, it means there's a lot of prairie soil in that hexagon. So a large green hexagon would indicate a location that has both high prairie soils and high tree canopy, which means that tree canopy may be encroaching on prairie habitat in that area versus a small green hexagon, which has high tree canopy but low prairie soils, and that would be more ideal. The large tan hexagons are areas that have a lot of prairie open space with high prairie soils and low tree canopy. This map helps us understand the important relationship between our forests and our prairies. Oregon white oak is a protected species that needs prairie habitats to survive. White oak prairie habitats are part of a vast regional network of Oregon white oak woodlands, which have been inhabited by and cared for by the indigenous people of this region since time immemorial, and which serve crucial ecological functions for the region as a whole. Oregon white oak and its associated prairie habitat are threatened by the encroachment of coniferous forests, and this encroachment alters habitat for many grassland and prairie species. The relationship between these parts of our landscape and their history is important for us to understand. Even if you turn back the clock by hundreds of years, you would not find that the area now known as Thurston County was a hundred percent forested. The unique ecological functions of prairies also provide crucial benefits like carbon sequestration and fire prevention. Prairie landscapes sequester carbon in soil, which means that they are able to perform a very resilient type of carbon sequestration that is more resistant to damage or loss by fires because carbon is stored underground in root systems. Prairies also do not burn as intensely as forests and may be able to provide gaps to prevent the spreading of forest fires. The care and management of prairie landscapes by controlled burning is a longstanding traditional method used by indigenous peoples of this region for both avoiding forest encroachment on prairies and managing fire susceptibility of the landscape as a whole. And prairie management also represents an important aspect of indigenous foodways. This map gives us another way to visualize the relationship between our tree canopy and our prairies. This map uses two different colors to show two different areas for potential restoration. The purple color represents the potential tree canopy restoration areas, similar to the map we saw a couple slides ago, and the tan color And the tan color indicates areas where prairie soils are more covered with trees. The darker the tan color is on this map, the more there are prairie soils covered with trees in that hexagon. This gives us a way to visualize the relationship between areas that are more suitable for the planting of additional trees as tree canopy restoration versus areas that should be restored in the long term to prairie open space. The legend on this map gives us the ability to also view any areas where these two priorities might overlap. But as you can see, there are not a lot of areas that are in those shades in between the brown and purple, meaning there's not a lot of overlap between these two areas. Visualizing the data in this way will help us plan and prioritize for restoration efforts that focus on both of these crucial aspects of our environment. Part of what the tree canopy assessment allows us to do is plan our various efforts for environmental protection and restoration. The map we just saw helps us know what areas of the county should be prioritized or focused on for different types of restoration that require different types of management activities. By understanding the spatial relationship between our tree canopy and our prairie habitats, we can ensure that we maximize the ecological, historical and cultural value of all aspects of the environment contained within Thurston County. Both our tree canopy and our prairies provide crucial ecological services, including habitat for important native species, carbon sequestration and environmental resources. The data in this report means that we have quality information to base long term decisions on and to inform programmatic approaches to environmental protection and restoration. These maps represent some of the largest and most significant findings from the tree canopy assessment. If you want to keep learning more, we have made all the maps that are going into the report available. In the future, we hope that the tree canopy assessment report will help Thurston County and other regional planning partners prioritize programmatic restoration efforts, develop regulatory tools for tree canopy conservation, apply for funding to support tree canopy restoration efforts, understand relationships between tree canopy and other parts of the environment, restore prairie and Oregon white oak habitats and plan for carbon sequestration efforts to combat climate change. The tree canopy assessment is currently being used to inform the comprehensive plan periodic update and may be able to support grant funded work to research riparian habitat protection tools. If you have any ideas for how the county can use this valuable assessment, please let us know. This information has a broad scope of impact and a high potential to improve our ability to develop data backed methods for protecting and enhancing the environment. As I mentioned at the beginning, we're bringing this to you at an early phase so that we can incorporate your feedback. County staff is actively working to complete the full tree canopy assessment report. And when it's finished, it'll be made available to the public and it'll include even more information. As I mentioned before, tree canopy coverage in different land use designations and with different land cover types. And you can see those maps in the map packet that has been provided to you. Along with tables and additional data to help back up and provide context for those maps and narrative analysis to accompany all of those important pieces of data. My contact information is on the screen for any follow up questions. Please feel free to email me or give me a call and thank you so much for your time. We're really excited to bring this information to you.
I'll start. Thank you. That was fascinating. I had two questions, one of which I think you partially answered. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding it correctly. When we're talking about prairie restoration and the ways that impacts current canopy, we're compensating with that by doing both oak planting and increasing tree density elsewhere. I'm just trying to understand the difference between wanting to or the are we preserving or increasing our canopy while also increasing our prairie habitat? What our plan is there?
Yeah, so that was the intent with creating those maps that kind of compare those things. And the idea behind kind of displaying that in that way is to allow for prioritization and planning when folks are, when we or when other planning groups in our community are focusing on efforts in either of those areas. Those maps help us kind of give spatial priority to that and understand like where physically in the county, those are going to have the greatest value. Whether it is, yeah, Oregon white oak planning or prairie restoration work or the planning of additional trees is tree canopy restoration.
Thank you. And then my other question was about, I guess, these trees as actual organisms. So we talk a lot about canopy in this sense of it being fairly like this static interchangeable thing. But these trees are living breeding creatures, organisms of some sort. And they have, and for oak specifically, I know that gene like genetic diversity is really important and gene flow is really important. I'm wondering how that impacts our tree planting to ensure that these populations of trees are actually ecologically functional as well as being a blanket canopy cover. I think this map that you gave us is very interesting in that regard. It does provide a lot of fodder for that. So I want to commend you for the work that you guys have all done on this. It's just something I want to keep present in our minds when we're looking at it.
And one note, I think that it's important to remember, there's a, I think there's a difference between like the, this kind of large scale assessment that we're doing. And then some of the questions that you're asking would be things that would be applied at like a site scale for like restoration planning. So if we're doing like a HCP restoration for gopher habitat, you'd have, you can correct me if I'm wrong, like a qualified biologist working on those restoration plans. So they would take those kinds of things into consideration.
Yeah, excellent. Yeah, and I'm definitely about, that would definitely be true for the, the habitat restoration. But there's also the, the general use of tree canopy is like we're talking about doing streets and stuff like that. And this, this has an effect there as well. Those trees are not neutral.
This is a magnificent piece of work. I mean, it's, it's, it's jaw dropping, actually. It's, it's a magnificent treasure map of where we live. It's stunning. And especially the diversity, what we still have after all these years of development, at least from Europeans. I was curious about the, the water map, which is a little bit enigmatic in that we see the waterways we know, we see Black Lake, we see Summit Lake, Skookumchuck Lake. We see a little bit of rivers, but we know that there are a lot of wetlands. And I'm curious about why we don't see those maybe demarcated a little more clearly on the water map.
Yeah, so that's something I don't have necessarily in front of me right now, but what I can tell you is that the final report as an appendix has a full methodology. So for things like that, about questions about how each map was calculated and why things are displayed the way they are, that will be part of the report. And then maybe as a broader, more thematic response to, I know that the report as mostly tables and narrative at this stage has information about the amount of tree canopy that is within areas designated for critical areas based on the critical areas maps that the county has. And so there is some discussion of the relationship between things like the tree canopy and wetlands because they would be part of those critical areas. And again, that's something that is currently existing as more data tables and narratives and not as a map at this stage.
And I also think at a, like a two hundred and fifty acre scale, there's a question how much value you get from like putting it into that two hundred and fifty acre scale. Because we do have really good maps for where our wetlands are, we know where hydro soils are, we have nineteen nineties overflights, all sorts of things that we can also use in concert with this. And I would say this one is, you know, we've got, it's probably the least informative map.
Yeah, that's what I was like, but a little bit enigmatic, but yeah, least informative. Yeah, that, yeah, it'd be fascinating to get a little more detail on that. It's something almost like what we've seen with the, the tree canopy on prairie soils, where we can tell the amount of wetland in a quadrant, you know, with through that color bar. So be helpful.
Are we expecting that these maps in this program is going to inform our regulatory or development codes first through HCP? Or is this going to start informing our codes and regulations in some other program first? Because I don't think white oak is not called out in HCP. Now, obviously prairie soils are important to HCP. But how, how will we wrap this into actually changing development behavior?
I would say probably the first application where the planning commission might see it is we'll be updating our critical areas ordinance. And twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven, that is where white oaks are referenced.
Okay, in critical area first, okay.
Now, that's where you would see it programmatically. There are a lot of nearer term applications of this body of work and just the data that we're, that we've been presented with. It's just not something that would necessarily come before the planning commission. It's things that would inform HCP at a programmatic level, not like an update of the plan or anything like that.
Okay. Okay. Do you think that we'll actually see any of this outside of HCP and COA as, and critical areas?
You all, you just updated the forest land conversion. I know that the next phase of that sort of more a broader, broader look was Title twenty and Title eighteen. Those are the only other
Okay.
titles that really call for tree planting as part of development. So the forest lands conversion did not look at subdivisions. And so you'd have to really open up Title eighteen for that.
And I understand that this is so new and not fully developed yet that it having an impact today is not really a reasonable thing, but much like Commissioner Kaiser, I think this is one of the better things that you guys have put out in a while and put out a lot of really good stuff, but this is.
Crendela Cremas, what are you saying?
Well, I, I do want to do a shout out. Commissioner Bum Barker was influential in doing these maps with some preliminary. So thank you.
Was on looking at and giving some ideas.
I just took one note and, and it may just be to clarify something. It, it was mentioned that the prairie soils or prairie habitats sequester carbon in root systems. And I, I want to make sure that it's clear it's not necessarily in the roots themselves, but in the, the area around the roots and in, in the form of humus and in the soils and things like that. So we're looking at much more than just the, the growing roots in prairie soils as the carbon sequestered.
You're saying that that's a stable habitat issue, not just a planting the right species issue.
I'm saying that, that prairies have the opportunity, prairie soils and grasslands have the opportunity to sequester carbon for a very long time because of the pathway that gets carbon from the atmosphere into the form of humus and in the ground where it can be locked up for thousands of years. I'll make sure that's clear.
Do we think that we would see more and more of the Oregon white oak closer to the prairies than we would other conifers or other deciduous trees? I, I wouldn't, I don't really see them in marine bluffs and we do see them a little bit in riparian areas, but is the idea that we want these oaks to be closer to the prairies as well?
Yeah. Yeah, the Oregon white oaks in our region specifically are, we have Oregon white oak prairies kind of as a habitat type in some parts of this region. Oregon white oaks have a more woodland environment. But in our region, in the context of prairies, what we're looking to hopefully continue to avoid is the encroachment of the types of forests that you see out here that have things like Douglas firs in them, those nice big coniferous forests that we have coming in on prairies. And that the trees on prairies would be the Oregon white oaks.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda. Is work session number thirty two on Thurston, twenty forty five comprehensive plan, the follow up items from staff.
The good, go ahead.
Yeah, but I will say, I want to say, I think everybody has been using this climate crosswalk the way that we intended, which was to really do that crosswalk between the two plans. And this was the, what the planning commission asked for last time in our last meeting, which was, can you show us kind of what we've got, what we don't have, where we've got the building some climate mitigation plans and the comp plan where they line up. We did, I would say, our best to find the places where it connected the best. Some of those necklaces might not be as strong as folks would want, but this is intended as a tool for you all to be able to look through and see where we might need to do things differently. So, and I think folks have used it that way. So we're glad to see that.
Yeah, so I, I made this, so I'm happy to answer questions. I heard AI mention, no, it was me. So if there's a mistake, it's me, not the computer. So, yeah, so I wanted to really quickly hit on something that came up a lot. Where it says related comprehensive plan policies, IP actions, it means, it means just that, related. And so specifically, B two point one came up a few times where it talks about the commercial structure. So I put in the IPL CL fourteen, IP CL fourteen. There was a lot of time of working on this. So that's meant as a related policy saying, hey, here's the kind of language we have right now. This is something, if you like it, we could basically repeat it, but modify it for commercial structures. We could add to it. So it's a, it's a jumping off point for a lot of these related policies. So in no way did I mean them to be expected as verbatim. They are there. So you can see, okay, what kind of general stuff do we have and where can we build and make it better? So wanted to make sure that was clear. And the T C M P actions that are chosen from, because I'd heard a few numbers at the March meeting, I heard a list of forty actions, I had heard the list of seventy two. I wasn't sure where these numbers fully were pulling from. So I had gone ahead with the adopted plan. There is the written plan, which has the narrative and has all the, the adopted strategies and actions in that. There's also an appendancy or an appendix that has a bigger list of documents, but that is not the official adopted strategies and actions. So I think I heard a couple of things that were mentioned from that, but they're not actually in the adopted plan. So I did look over those initially, but then with Rebecca Harvey's help, our assignment programs, senior program. It's a wonderful long title because she's very, very educated and skilled. She helped point me back to just the ones that were adopted. So that's what's listed there. That is from the official document through that narrative section. So that's why, case you're seeing things, you're like, hey, this was in that appendix in the community actions list. I had to go with just what was in the plan. So, yeah, and I put the numbers, action description, and then related comp plan policies that we can build off of, add to, make stricter language, whatever you guys want. So if you want, we can go one by one through it. However, the planning commission.
We have a discussion about how we want to go through it? Or just start with some comments? Your eyes.
I think that for our own of these organizations, or at least my own, you know, I'm being soft. My own organization thought it might be easier if we went through it more systematically than if we popcorned around a lot.
Other comments, other ideas?
Yeah, definitely if there's something on there that someone wants to really highlight first, maybe that's a good idea to start with, but then.
I feel like it might be beneficial to address specifically the things we got comments on today and then proceed sequentially. Because I feel like those are going to eat the most time. And we can, we can spare the audience a very protracted, like wait until we get to that thing and we can tackle those all at once. Just while it's all fresh and ready in our minds.
Like that idea. Let's do that.
Isn't sweet. Um, my, I have, if I can go first, yeah, so uh there was a big focus on commercial and I think I I understand why we have so many things targeting residential. Excluding farmlands, which have a ton of policies in here. Um, is there significant commercial operations in unincorporated Thurston County?
Look, it is the goal to not have.
That was my thought process, yeah. Um, so, wow, I understand, I I agree, we should probably add some commercial specific language in here. I think part of the reason why we don't have significant number of actions targeting is because the areas where that needs to happen is the cities, which this doesn't govern. Um, I just wanted to point that out, and um I did also want to point out that um we do have language about adding trees, but not language about planting trees. Um, which is an interesting distinction. It is not a significant amount of adding trees. It's talking about adding trees along walkways and things like that, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that. I I do believe we should add um something to the order of uh support and incentivize the planting or or new tree planting where feasible, something like that. Um, in there, I I understand that there's not a lot of county controlled lands where we can go just plant a bunch of trees. So our levers are going to be incentivizing, educating and informing people about good ways to do that. Um, and yeah, I would support an action to do that. Those are my two main talking points based on what I heard, because I I think the the commercial thing in particular was brought up four times. Um, and I agree it should be added, but I also want to emphasize it is not a major consideration currently in unincorporated Thurston County. Yes, there aren't significant commercial operations in unincorporated Thurston County outside of that culture.
My counter to that is that if they're not significant ones, then um the impact in terms of our own infrastructure is lower. So it's a relatively low hanging fruit.
Yeah, I I agree that we should add it. I I don't disagree, I'm just saying, I understand why it didn't get highlighted in the existing things, since this is an iterative document. And the focus in the past has been largely on residential, which the majority of unincorporated Thurston County is.
I do just want to highlight, um, since the programmatic thing is still come before the planning commission, that we are doing a lot of work specifically with like our ag operators to help them secure funding to restore riparian um riparian areas planned. Uh, we've been supporting WSU with a whole hedgerow series and trying to get hedgerows onto the rural landscape. So I um, it'd be great to have this reflect that more. I just want you to know that we are trying to support our private land owners in the planting of trees and have been fairly successful in the last few years.
I I do one other question. Um, the term study, I know study seems like a software, but does that have advantages to us for securing funding? Um, okay, I I just wanted, I I thought that, and I just wanted to iterate that for the benefit of the audience that study, while it sometimes seems soft, is strategically put in there because there may be funding sources that the county can utilize if we have stated goals to study things.
A lot of the grant programs and I don't know more about this, they require a study first before they will give you the money to go do the thing. And so it is important to have the study in there and to get the funds to do that.
I I would ask what the definition of a study is? And can it be done without first applying for a, you know, a study grant, but can the first grant applied for be an implementation grant? Is is there a way to?
There are definitely some programs that would allow you to do that. Um, it's harder to get the money for those if you don't have some data to back it up. Like when you go to apply for the grant, it's usually a lot harder. Um, people who do have studies are going to beat you out.
But 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 the ones that we're leveraging are like our voluntary stewardship program grant. Those are the implementation grants and all the things that we partner with Thurston Conservation District on. That is to get BMPs out on the ground. And so then our role becomes removing permitting roadblocks to have those things happen.
And I can only speak to my experience in my work, but so solely on energy efficiency and clean energy projects. At my company, we apply for a ton of grants on behalf of our clients and we never apply for study grants. We only apply for implementation grants and the study is just a part of the process on the way to the implementation of the project. Um, because we don't want to wait, we want to get the projects done.
And there, there are definitely some uh programs that will basically allow you to do that. Cause I mean, the standard operating procedure is usually like study, plan, and then once you plan, you figure out what implementation tracks are going to take. Like, is that going to be a new incentive program? Is that going to be like code updates?
And and this is very specific to alternative procurement through performance contracting, which requires the the audit as a as a as a first step in the process to the implementation. Um, but it allows for you to skip the study grant and go right to the implementation grant.
So advocate to get more programs like that.
What I'm doing in my day job all the time.
Thank you.
But also, most jurisdictions that I talk to don't don't avail themselves of these things. Um, and and because they're locked into the the process, what we've always done, we go and we get a feasibility grant and then we do a study. And then we get a grant to do design and we get a design and we put it out for bid and and so um convincing juris, I mean, I had a call with a a a lawyer for a municipality today where I had to explain to them that they were absolutely wrong, that the they were saying it wasn't legal to do what I do every day. Um, but it it absolutely is, and it saves a lot of time and energy and money to just do it that way.
I would say if there are policies in there where it can be expanded upon to address new contract, new contracting mechanisms, granting mechanisms, like by all means, like we
Alternative, because it's not new, been in state law for thirty years, but we just don't use it.
Um, I mean, yes, let's make it more action oriented.
Okay. And I think the the big distinction here, a lot of times when you're thinking about programming and how you move it forward, there are some places where like the best path forward isn't clear. And you might want to study it, you might want to engage the community, like at that really kind of tactical programmatic level. Um, there are others where it's crystal clear and like just go for it. Um, so.
And and I would say sometimes the best path forward is just do the best you can with what you have now. And and avail yourself whatever technology is available, because you you know, don't let the perfectly the enemy of the good and technology will continue to advance.
Sounds like we could have a lot of yes and.
Yeah, well, there's one example, somewhere in here, it talks about um, removing gas from buildings or or, you know, someone had a comment banning gas. And um, I can just say from my experience, I just came back from a a training in Arizona where I talked to um folks in my organization that uh do capital asset planning and decarbonization plans um at scale, they have over three billion square feet of commercial buildings in their database that they manage. And what I was told, very interesting, that to get the the gas, to reduce the gas use in a commercial building by eighty percent, if that costs one X, to reduce it by a hundred percent costs five X. And it's because the the, you know, and this is in their experience across the entire country and parts of of Europe and Canada and whatnot. So uh, you know, climate may be different, but the to handle the very cold um portions of the year or it's something that's very hot portion of the year just takes a tremendous amount more energy. And to electrify a building to handle those loads is five times as expensive as to electrify a building to handle eighty percent of the need. And so then the question becomes, do you spend your money on getting eighty percent of the gas out of five buildings or a hundred percent of the gas out of one? And how do we get to where we want to be faster? And I would say we we take the low hanging fruit, we do the eighty percent and let technology advance over time.
We do yes and. Literally just say target to eighty percent first, then perceive like
Or whatever is, you know, financially most advantageous. Yeah.
Uh, I see that Commissioner Fishburne has his hand up and so does Commissioner Peschner, I just wanted to note that.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Bartlett. Uh, so back to Mr. Baumberger's question about um where we state that something is for a study. Um, if the intent is for us to then pursue an implementation grant, could we say that also?
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
It makes it more active and it's more clear to the public who'd be reading it.
Makes our intentions more clear to the granting agency too. We will be back.
Yeah. Commissioner Peschner, sorry to miss your hand.
No problem, thank you, Chair. Uh, I agree with you on both points. Uh, I think that A, studies can be different things and I do studies on search engines all the time. Uh, maybe even artificial intelligence provides some studies. Um, second, uh, I moved to adopt the eighty percent priority goal. Love that idea. Uh, third, I just have a clarifying question about the crosswalk on page twenty. The page numbers are in the top right. On page twenty, twenty one and twenty two, it lists A five preserve tree canopy and manage forests and prairies to sequester carbon. And then on the next page, it says A six, but exactly the same thing. And then on the next page says A seven, but exactly the same thing. It does seem like all of the notes and details are all related to that topic. I'm just curious if A five, A six and A seven are actually exactly the same? Or it seems like ones maybe more about ferret forests and ones maybe more about prairies. Um, is there anything we should do to clarify or are these actually the the exact names for A five, A six and A seven?
Pulling up real quick, the T C M P. There's some more, but they're different. So, yes, so the adopted T C M P on page ninety five of it says strategy A five slash A six slash A seven preserve tree canopy and manage forests and prairies to sequester carbon.
Okay, then, uh. What?
Oh, perfect, I was I was glad we we got a got that figured out.
I believe we have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, I heard that.
Thank you for that.
Um. Mr. Peschner, I I I believe we have a motion on the floor, is that accurate?
Oh, I'm sorry, that was a joke. Can we, if you want, if you want it to be a motion, I'm happy to make it.
I, it may, it may require a little more wordsmithing, but I think I think the intention is good.
Um, could we instead maybe request an action item for staff to draft some language to that effect?
Yeah.
Having, you understand our intent from that discussion? No, okay, um.
I think maybe I could try and reiterate it, see if, see if you've got it. So it's, we're essentially uh looking for the kind of lower part of that uh, you know, that cost return curve that that first part of the the tail of your cube root function. Um, to identify basically the the low hanging fruit for, and is it specific to decarbonization?
That was the example that I was using, but I'm sure that there's uh examples of this, you know, throughout the various policies in here that to have um very specific language about, you know, let's go all the way there may may be difficult.
Turn, we might want to use this to avoid diminishing returns.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or maybe not disincentive, but incentive, like prioritize low cost, high impact um decarbonization efforts, something to that nature.
Yeah, I'm concerned about creating an artificial cap here.
Right. I I don't think a number, like sauce.
Yeah, I think that we can talk about encouraging or not like like encourage or like mandating as a minimum this like uh eighty percent um level or whatever we're talking about there. Um, but like we we're what we're looking at, like encouraging this low hanging fruit to accelerate uh our our adoption of these plans without making that the upper cap that then we've we've stuck ourselves with without creating a ceiling there.
And I also wonder, like, so have we inventoried all of the the areas where we'd want to do this? Cause this feels like a planning, planning effort, like inventory all of the areas and then assess the high return. Um, I I I return opportunities, you know, for near term action.
Yeah, prioritize because of the urgency of the situation. Um, trying to get as much done quickly as possible.
Yeah, it sounds like Commissioner, I'm sorry, I was gonna call you Commissioner Day. It sounds like Derek has our impulse to run a temp check on whether we're good on that as an action item.
Oh, man. I'm thinking about the back of the light bulbs and I'm imagining scenarios where some person, in some fiscal year, somebody bought a whole bunch of conventional light bulbs, really cheap. No, seriously, they did, and they're in, they're in a warehouse and they want to use them up. They want to use them up before they make the transition. There'll be lots of examples of things like that. And I want to make sure we don't put the county in a straitjacket. No, you have to do this if there's some reason why it's not clear here that they are not doing it.
Like our stash of styrofoam plates in Stepe that we're still working through, because it was gigantic.
Yeah, and there was carbon produced, make those.
Yeah.
So it's like, you know.
From years and years ago, I just, just to be clear, whoever bought those probably hasn't been at the county for over ten years.
Right.
I'm gonna make a quick comment on that. I know that the state of Oregon has like outlawed fluorescent bulbs. Um, the state of Washington is debating it. Um, and so it it may be something where um we let, we let the state handle it so that people can no longer purchase those in in the state and rather than not allowing people to use them, they just can't get them here. And and that becomes the way that they they transition over. So I'll go to Commissioner Bartlett and then Casino.
Okay, um, I just don't want to, I I I definitely agree with the sentiment of what you're saying there of like using the resources that we have in terms of not not generating more carbon by demanding more production. Um. I don't want to create a bunch of scenarios um in which we uh are uh are are slowing ourselves down on this. But I think that what you're talking about there does fit within what we're talking, this like prioritization. I think that's already covered within the prioritization that we were just discussing, where we're like if part of the low hanging fruit is using resources that we have, if doing so is actually more carbon neutral, which, yeah. Um, so I wouldn't want, I I agree with you there, I just want to let that slow us down.
And and there is definition in the state law of cost effective criteria and and whatnot.
So Commissioner Peschner has.
Okay, I'll go to Commissioner Casino and then back to.
I think part of that that we have to also consider is that in in our planning documents, if these are then impacting central services or the maintenance guy and we have to hire on fifteen new guy, I have no idea how long it takes for them to change a light bulb out.
Or how many hours it takes.
I probably don't want to know how long it takes them to change a light bulb out, but that's a real consideration as well.
Yeah. Um, I can, there was something stated in public comment that I'll I'll just amend. Um, because again, the company I work for purchases and installs more LED and streetlights than anyone in in the nation. And usually you'll get a, the the lights will pay for themselves in energy savings and somewhere between eight and fifteen years, not in one year. Um, but it it does make sense to switch them up because the the projects pay for themselves and the light bulb, the LED bulbs last a lot longer. They often don't have to be replaced for twenty plus years after they've been retrofitted. Um, Commissioner Peschner.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I just reiterate, when you started this discussion, that you said something along the lines of you know, getting the biggest bang for our buck. And I think that's exactly how we should word this or request for analysis from the staff on which options give us the biggest bang for the buck. And, you know, if light bulbs cost us ten million dollars, uh, but only provide a marginal impact, then even if it's uh whatever, in whatever way, a lower cost thing per unit, that doesn't mean we should do it. Uh, we should do the things that make the biggest impact for the lowest cost uh and do those things in priority.
Based on what you said, it sounds like um there is a labor savings long term with that replacement because of their longevity.
Yeah.
Which might not be currently, because of the way budget years work, might be difficult sometimes to realize quickly.
But I think it's still a good
Oh, absolutely.
Goal point, um.
I I would argue it's worth doing, even if it is a little front loaded on cost.
Mm hmm.
And if I may, this is actually a really good example of a place where like this would require an assessment. Uh, so this is a place where something like a study might actually be the most impactful thing because it gives us the opportunity to see where those where those opportunities are. So even though it feels like a light thing, sometimes it's a big deal.
I just, I just want to say that I'm also haunted by the light bulb situation. In in a different capacity in the sense of like, you know, like does, it does feel like In in a different capacity, in the sense of like, you know, like, does it does feel like low-hanging fruit? And it does feel like a lo- a long delay towards implementation. And when we're talking about the time scale we're dealing with here, I am really worried about our about decelerating language and the language that encourages inaction um, as opposed to uh, working through this. I think that there is an administrative burden to inaction as well as uh, a financial and obviously a climate one. Um, so anything that encourages accelerated action is kind of what I want to push us towards on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the Public Works, who is the one that's going to be replacing bulbs and stuff, they know how many bulbs they've got in the county. They know how long it takes them to replace them. They know approximately how long they burn out. Uh, they would have that kind of data. Uh, and all you need to do is ask them.
And at at the risk of whatever, I I would I would just say that um, these retrofit projects are not projects that are typically best handled by the staff of the jurisdiction. It's something that you just do it all at once with a vendor, and it pays for itself because you can finance it through the savings. So.
They're doing that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Was there suggested language on the table?
Yeah, let's get back to that.
I might suggest that that there be language to explore all um, project delivery methods. Um, so that to to identify, you know, what, because in the in the case of light bulbs, like performance contracting absolutely makes a ton of sense. It's no question. Um, and it will speed up the project and it can be paid for in a budget-neutral way out of savings created. Um, and so I looking at encouraging to look at all the different legal delivery methods and procure and for project procurement and delivery, um, I think would go a long ways.
I if I could, I think you were originally asking about the language for the thing we just discussed, and what you were discussing is a new item.
Okay.
Yes.
There was talk about a temperature check and that didn't
Yes.
I also have a note here. So I've I've I have continued to append this action item. And I think the things that we should be considering is probably, I'm thinking, we want to, we want to have some uh, some way to address opportunity costs because those are real. Um, project delivery methods, um, I have a note on public-private partnerships, like that innovative project delivery methods is probably a really important lens to put on what is cost-effective. So who's paying for it or what timeframe and how do you, how do you get the work done? So I I could see those as like one, one action item here that we could write some language around.
Did you capture Commissioner Bartlett's point about framing this as a method of accelerating? I feel like adding that language specifically is useful in combating any future interpretation of this as a slowdown.
Yeah, the intention is to accelerate.
Like, put the intention in it so that there's no confusion when a different body is revising this in five years.
Thank you.
You're all gonna be here.
I'm having a private joke.
Check out any timeline.
Any other comments? And I'm looking at screen as well.
I don't know how to give thumbs up over the phone, but thumbs up to that.
Thanks. I believe we've addressed the topics, I think, from the
I think so. I'm looking at, you know, actionable language, using the actionable language in the T C M P.
That's the big one is, uh, we've we've been struggling with that from the beginning. It is replacing uh, like encourages and, you know, like encouraging or replacing language with more actionable language, replacing language with more aggressive language in the context.
To that point, I could.
Please.
Um, uh, there there are several points where, as we discussed earlier, it says a regional approach is better. And I do want to point out that the public comment specifically said that can be true, and we can take a more proactive role or encourage pilots and things of that nature. And I feel like that is a very easy tweak to make in the language that does not uh, change its interpretation. It just makes our meaning clearer.
Encourage leadership in the in the context of where 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 regional action is required.
Lead and model behaviors that, you know, something like that.
Uh, do we want a temperature check on on that idea? Do we feel comfortable telling staff or or asking staff? Creating some language that that um, maybe imbue the county with a spirit of innovation?
And I think some of these are actually probably probably covered. So, for example, like in the one point two, the you know, we do say that the county will coordinate a regional policy. Like, that is the county taking that leadership role. So there are some places where
That's why I say that if the others don't come along, we just do it anyway.
What's that?
If if others don't want to coordinate with us and work with us, we just we'll go on and do it anyway.
Yeah, I I agree with what Commissioner Mumberger just said, that in context where we're like talking about, like, yeah, I guess when we're talking about accelerating language overall, that's like where we're talking about coordinating. It's like leading the coordination, you know, like where it's where we're talking about.
So C L one, C two, this is that same one that that vaguely mentions commercial building, right? Where the active word is coordinate.
Yeah.
And the considerations here state that it's appropriate to do it at a regional scale. Um, and I think to Derek's point, that is intended to communicate leadership in that. But to the public and to potentially people who would be looking at this in the future or using it as something to inform, we can be more clear in how we word that to make it clear that we are taking a leadership role in that coordination. Um, and we could, if we wanted to include language, like, just because it makes sense to do at a a regional level does not mean that we can't start that work or model that work or run pilots of that work. And I think that we can be more specific in that in a way that satisfies the public comment, clarifies our intent, and doesn't substantially deviate from what we were intending to communicate in the first place. That makes sense.
I just wanted to see what language you propose instead.
Oh, um. Uh, lead the coordination of a regional policy for assessment and disclosure of residential and commercial building energy performance, encourage uh, what was it? Encourage early adoption or pilot programs at the county level where feasible, something like that. This
I like it.
I'm spitballing. You can obviously grammatically tweak it, however, but.
I also think of of uh, future staff that might be reading this.
Yeah, to make it clear.
They're charged with doing. And and I would hope that it is clear to them. Um, I think our intention is not that they wait until everyone gets their stuff in a pile, but they like move forward.
So the verbiage you handed uh, over was lead the coordination for a regional poli- or
Of a
of a regional policy for assessment and disclosure of residential and commercial building energy performance ratings. And then you said encourage.
Um, encourage, yeah, uh, I'm exactly sure how to phrase this, but um, encourage a proactive adoption of uh, county, I guess Thurston County level actions and pilots to support this leadership or something like that. I I know I'm I'm not the best wordsmith on the spot, but.
Might be a little run-on, but it's got all the bells and whistles.
And you can absolutely Hemingway that if you need to, as long as we keep the
We can, we can, um, human brain it, maybe.
Yeah, and
Yeah, no, I think we can definitely work with that. And that was a good temperature check from everybody. That's what I'm looking for.
Knows on that?
Getting from everyone.
That's gotta be Yeah. Question I would have is a clarification. You said encourage the pilot. Why not just say the pilot or pilot the?
Well, I mean, piloting can happen not just with us, with others. Um, and pilots are just one method of starting, right? I don't want any action to just be a pilot. If we have a policy we just want to do, or if we have an idea that we're pretty sure we're all going to agree on and we can implement it now, we don't need to pilot it. Just do it.
Sometimes we are the pilot.
Sometimes we are. That's why pilot is one method, which is why I said encourage, but.
And so encourage could be towards the the jurisdictions and groups that will come to follow after we pilot. Because we're not going to tell the
That's, yeah, because we can't tell them. Well, we could do a little bit in joint planning, maybe, but.
Up-level my comment or attempt to. The sentiment that I heard from the public today was that they want to hear things that are more actionable and stronger language. And to me, when I hear encourage.
Yeah, that's just sort of like, well, that would be nice.
In the same vein that we're being asked to look for changes in. So we look for something actionable, I guess.
Implement uh, implement actions and pilots where appropriate, something like that?
Yeah, actually implements are really handy, like general placeholder or general uh.
So that we can clear that not every pilot shouldn't be the only action. It's one possible method of starting a thing before we have a regional consensus.
I have as the action item here that I've started to write down is find places where we want to, we want to say lead pilot model.
Implement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then collaborate specifically should more clearly, uh, anywhere collaborate shows up should more clearly show our leadership, which is what it's already trying to communicate. It's just not as clear to the public.
One thing I will say is when you're working in bureaucratic spaces, sometimes collaborate is an important tool to provide leadership. Because if we come in and say, we are the leader, we can
Then there's some, yeah, and then like Seattle's like, what are you, what are you talking about?
The cities or, you know, the next county up.
All assuming that there's funding for these new programs.
That is, I think that's the the crux of all of this, um, is, you know.
Money.
The, there are some things that we might be able to pick up with current resources, not all of this, to be clear, not all of this. Um, and there there are a couple of things I think are important when I think about how you get money. Um, study is not only important to uh, to like grantors, it can be an important way to sell an idea to the public for the county to pay for it. So they're um, being strategic about how we talk about where we're starting. I think will be important because some things will be harder than others. And some more of that, like and be ruined. I'll just
And I'll just make a comment that in, you know, sometimes the 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 money that is needed to accomplish these projects is the money we're spending on energy in the form of electricity, natural gas, diesel for vehicles, all that stuff. And if you can finance the project through the savings.
And public-private partnerships.
It gets done. Yeah, go ahead.
And I think we also should consider that one of the reasons, one of many reasons why we use encouraging and discouraging language, no matter how strong that is, instead of definitive language and shalls and musts, we start putting shalls and musts in there on ourselves, and then we don't do it. We're going to spend more money through the P A O's office defending why we didn't do it than we would have if we would have just found the funding somewhere else at some other time. And I want Futurewise to show up and say, you guys said you were going to do this. You didn't say you wanted to do this. You didn't say you were going to try to do this. You said you were going to do this, and then you didn't. And then we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars going to our P O A to to uh, which could have gone somewhere else for sure.
Not to mention the judgment.
What's that?
Not to mention the judgment.
Yes.
Yeah, this is a planning document.
Yes.
And it's not statute.
It's not the Building and Development Code for sure. Yeah.
So we have to keep that in mind.
Right. And with that, you've got a fine line to walk. Well, but I think you get the sense where we're coming from. And so we'll have, um, we look forward to what you can come up with um, in that spirit. Um, next on our agenda is a staff update from Derek.
Real, real quick. Um, so we we've said to address the public comment and then to do line items. And we still have not officially clarified the action item for staff yet. And I think we should do that.
And then we can request a draw.
Yes, I saw that. Um, I I thought staff has indicated that
Want to add any?
Um, so could you could you read the action item that you have?
Yeah, so I have two action items. The first one um, is was about that. I'm not going to read it verbatim, but that was like looking for those low-hanging fruit opportunities. Um, the second one is we would go through and look, look for places where we can modify language um, to make it more actionable, a little bit more kind of forward, forward-facing, forward-leaning, um, looking for places where we want to say lead pilot model and as appropriate. And I I think we'd probably take, I I understand the direction to be like a little bit aggressive on those.
So I I was wondering if the planning commissioners had time to go through the crosswalk because there are some actual gaps where we don't have strong policy language. So I was hoping to hear that. And I think that from the public comment, they were also hoping to hear the planning commissioners who'd seen the gaps in this crosswalk and would like to fill them in.
I, yeah, I thought we were going to do that.
I would like some more time to do that than to spitball it tonight. And I'd be prepared to do it somewhere later in the month.
I agree with that. I think it'll take more time.
Yes, the the public hearing draft has already been shared specifically with a note that this is work that the planning commission is going to have ongoing, um, even following with all the steering. That's fine enough when you're a time crunch.
And then that way, now we have it clear to the public that you guys aren't like, okay, good. Perfect.
That's
Yeah, and you'll probably be getting a lot more of it next week.
You know.
Point us exactly where they would like words changed.
Well, yeah, yeah. It sounds like the Thurston Climate Action Team is putting together useful documents too that'll probably be a handy reference.
Which is all a a compliment of your work because it makes it so much easier to do this.
Oh, my gosh, yes. This is exactly what I wanted.
And I'm glad I had a chance to explain the the related policies. It's not meant to say that we are doing it verbatim. That's meant to like be jumping off.
And this are new staff comments where you you've stated we could incorporate and like almost all of your suggestions there make total sense to implement.
Yeah, and and that's, so some of these, um, like, uh, I say stuff like potential new addition and like, that's just for that. Have potential additions anywhere you want. But yeah, it it will be very, very helpful if you guys get a chance to go through this and see, because that's what I've tried to do is show, hey, look, we've got these things, but they're still not quite addressing this. And and we want to get those because we can change the the action verbs and everything, and then we'll still miss so much of what all these folks have come out to say if we just go with that.
That was a very good job.
Thank you. And if you have any questions or if you're like, hey, could you look for this thing? Please let me know. Um, spent a lot of time on this and I might have it saved in an older version or something. Yeah.
Maybe we should make it available to our city partners out of a spirit of collaboration and leading.
No surprises.
It's not a bad idea.
We're further ahead than in terms of our timeline and review. And so
We are leading.
But after twenty forty-five, after the comprehensive plan, we go into joint planning, yeah? So that's next on the agenda, pretty much?
If if there are necessary changes. So joint plans were already um, updated last year. Um, but housing, so if there are changes in housing, we would make sure to reflect those.
There are definitely some nexuses with climate and housing, you know, some of these actions.
I mean, we're expecting there to be changes. We were hoping that you would even get a chance to start looking at those this summer. But uh, from what we've heard from our fellow jurisdictions, they're not, they're not going to be ready by this summer.
They do know that we're going to push more of the housing into the U G A.
Yes, yes. They've seen all those numbers.
Commissioner Pestner, I see your hands up.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, two things. Uh, number one, I think it was asked or mentioned that, well, can we learn from other jurisdictions on this? You know, climate topic. And uh, as a proud resident of Lacey, I noticed that we uh, just a week ago, won the Green Municipality of the Year Award from the Thurston Chamber of Commerce. So I think there's probably a lot of things we can learn from their grand example. Um, number two, and I only say that with a little bit of sarcasm. Number two, uh, I would ask about the aquaculture section, um, and simply state that I have said before, and I will say again, I think we're severely lacking in actual data about what's going on in the aquaculture uh, in South Puget Sound and in the border in in Thurston County waters. Um, I shared with several planning commissioners some recent news articles about uh, for the last five years that the South Puget Sound has experienced a ninety-five percent reduction in Dungeness crabs. Um, we all know that none of us have been able to go crab-potting at any point in the recent future in South Puget Sound. So uh, I don't know the exact numbers, but I'm sure there's some scientific Uh, I don't know the exact numbers, but I'm sure there's some scientific studies if uh, if the local Como and Cairo news stations are running stories about a ninety-five percent reduction in our. Dungeness crab population. So I was impressed with the comments of uh Ron Smith uh and. You know, concerns about focusing on the environment first as it comes to aquaculture. Um, and I just feel like we need a lot better information about the size of the industry, the. The value that it adds to our community and then the ways that we have potential for oversight and um taking care of the environment uh first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Park.
Yeah, uh, I just want to like refer, like reiterate that like. It, the reason that we talk about wanting to prioritize the environment first in these issues isn't like a, as a separate issue. It's that like, that is the context in which the aquaculture can exist. It's the same thing with agriculture. It's the same with, with uh the other policies that we discuss. We talk about that as a priority, not because it is a moral imperative, although it is, uh, but because it's just. A requirement for the other things to be able to exist. We cannot, we can't, like I've said it before, but we can't have a good economy on a dead planet. Um, we, we need that part, so uh. It's, it's not a, it's a priority because it has to be. I just want to acknowledge that.
Um, on that point, um, I know that we got public comment on it. It seems like there's a heavy fixation on the sort of editor editorially. Framed statement at the beginning of the chapter. Um, could we may?
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say like framing aquaculture, it's this great thing. Um, I think we could probably write that. In a more factual, straightforward way that doesn't doing favors to one side or the other, just stating that it exists in the county, that it does contribute. Like jobs or whatever, but we're not saying these are great, these should be prioritized, right? It's a balance between. Uh, environmental impacts and this activity in some cases and. We are, we shouldn't really be in a place where we're speaking, it's, it's uh, how great it is in that context. I don't think, I don't think that's a point of the plan, is it?
Mr. Casino.
I, I, I'm not against having the aquaculture section starting out in a tone neutral voice. That doesn't bother me at all, but I think we also have to remember that. Aquaculture is specifically called out as a preferred use uh by the state. And um while it does have impacts, all kinds of. Food production and resource production has negative environmental impacts, so I'm not terribly interested on picking on. Aquaculture anymore than I'm interested on elevating it out of tone neutral.
It does have a thousand year history in our region, indigenous history. Um, throughout the Puget Sound, you will see shellfish gardens that were built by the ancestors of the Squaxin, Nisqually. Jahalas people, so it is kind of special.
I agree. It's different though than how it's done commercially.
So it doesn't, it doesn't say commercial or non-commercial. Uh, it says Thurston County recognizes aquaculture as an important industry contributing to the county's economy, environment and history. Properly managed and responsible aquaculture is important to the county's rural character, so that. It doesn't say commercial and then the second sentence does qualify it as properly managed, responsible. I mean, we're open to changing any of this.
Right. I wonder if we want, if we should call it industry or practice?
Practice? To piggyback on Commissioner Kaiser a little bit too, we, one of the other reasons not to pick on aquaculture too much is because many of these aquaculture. Farms are in tribal coordination and they have financial interests in them. And if we're concerned about cutting down forests to fund schools, we should certainly be worried about shutting down aquaculture when the tribes get. Have a financial interest in it as well.
Yeah, I would, I would encourage everyone to, to read it and see, because there, that balance that you mentioned, um, there are quite a few. Sentences in here that specifically talk about that balance and so whether. It, it is neutral or not, um, I think it'd be good for the planning commission to weigh in.
And I will share that we did make some updates based on the last round of comments that came in on aquaculture. Um. Commissioner Pestinger is right, there is a shortage of data for that section and that's still true in the public hearing draft. But the narrative's be, been rewritten a little bit based on the comments we received at the last couple of meetings, so it looks different in our public hearing draft and. I'd encourage you all to take a look at it again.
And were you, Ashley, were you reading from the public hearing draft?
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
Mr. Holmes. Uh, I know you all, the, the shoreline master program has not come up to the back from ecology yet for the commissioners to prove. However, there was a lot of discussion about aquaculture during the shoreline master program. We resolved a lot of those issues during that. There's a lot of language put into that. I would suggest that we take a look at that language. And as comparison to for the comprehensive plan, there might be something there that you can use because.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Cause it was bad back and forth at least two dozen times.
And if this is our thirty second meeting on Thurston twenty forty five, we had eighty-one on F M P. Right. And aquaculture was a huge portion.
And aquaculture, and that all went forward to ecology for approval. They've already gone through their review process. So.
We're waiting on comments back.
I understand, but I mean, when I went through their review process, they've got through their hearing process too, and they're waiting for the final comments, as I understand it. So that's all been vetted, that's all been done the last three years. I think we need to take a look at that when we're talking about the comprehensive. Just a recommendation.
Uh, and I just want to add like, I know that we're uh. I know that the, the framing of these documents is, is really important. I think that there's been a lot of work and a lot of thought that went into these industries. I just like there's a. And to the same degree that we, that the. The comprehensive plan is not a zoning document. It's also not a marketing campaign, a marketing document for industry. Uh, I really appreciate the work that I've seen go into making this uh a uh. A statement of where we're, where we're at and a statement of the kinds of, like, the, the statement of the balances that we're trying to strike and. How, and, and how we, and then following into how we are addressing those balances rather than uh. Talking ourselves up, uh, which is not what the document's for. So thank you for that.
Comments about energy audits or planting trees were addressed.
Did bring up planting trees at the beginning and suggested that we add an item for planting trees.
Yeah, I'm looking for the energy audit section myself. Um, I'm hoping that we can talk about that when we talk about this in depth. Yeah. It's first on my list.
Yeah, and so clarified, so we're all clear, the plan is for the planning commission to go back through this crosswalk and then come back with more specific recommendations.
Yeah, and, and get a lot more feedback next week at the.
I'm sure we'll hear some.
Um, okay, uh, next on our agenda is staff update.
So we don't have any big updates. We're still working through our hiring process for two associate planners.
No, they, they've been hired.
They've been hired. Oh, then go.
Breaking nose, sorry. Well, I, I just, I need to um do a shout out to our new operations manager. It only took three and a half weeks to get two new associate planners on board, which is like a record for, for Thurston County, from hosting to making offers. But um, yeah, we just actually got uh the second offer accepted this afternoon, so we have one. Um, successful internal candidate, actually one of our current planners is going to be stepping over into. Long range planning, um Leah Davis's old position. It is going to look a little bit different. Organizing some of our planner positions to provide growth opportunities for our current planners. Um, but that's Natalie Jacobs, Mike Sleeper, and upcoming planning commission meeting, really excited to give her that professional development opportunity. The second um associate planner position, which I'm going to be going to someone from Dakota. Um, and they'll be coming over and actually it's, they'll be in our current planning unit. Um, so yeah, sorry.
And the recent manager is Andrew Bond?
No, Elena Bradshaw. The Bradshaw, and she is like on a roll. I mean, she has been posting, interviewing and hiring like every week. Two new people started today.
He's an absolute machine.
Yeah.
Now you're in this, you're an assistant planner, Dale.
We do have, it just got posted, we, or will get posted tomorrow. Um, yes, an assistant planner in current planning, so if you know. And then we're all mostly staff. We are so close to getting through our dominoes.
And we'll do it again.
And then we'll do it again.
Turn is just part of government.
Um, oh, um, compliance supervisor, since I know a lot of you worked with Sandy, that um has also been filled. Um, that person will be coming to us from Alaska. Um, they did spill prevention work up there and ran a whole public information campaign for solid waste. Working with the tribes in the rural communities of Alaska, so excited to have them coming down. Thurston County's on the back.
How many people do you have in compliance now?
Should be five.
Two and then half of a supervisor. Why? Do you want to join the compliance team as a volunteer?
No.
Can you put that, can you put something in the call plan, expand?
Always an issue, it always has been an issue because it's driven by complaints, it's not.
Which means it's not crying on the compliance team.
No, it is, um, uh, we, we have a very neat compliance system here in the county, um voluntary compliance. Um, we're all about trying to work with our property owners to bring them into compliance. Which means it's very staff intensive. It's a lot faster to just write fines than it is to actually engage with people where they're at and try to figure out a path forward, so. They have amazing compliance officers, but we need more.
Yeah.
I mean, that's also a, um, a general Thurston twenty forty five update. Maya, sorry to keep you up this late.
Yeah, no problem. I am on the West Coast now. I hope you all know that. Um, and uh, I actually will be up there next week, so that's my fun update. I'll be coming up for the public hearings, so I'll get to meet many of you who have not met yet. Um, but for Thurston twenty forty five, I just wanted to give an update on logistics of the hearing. So previously our planning commission discussed having like tickets or some method and then um a, like a pre-registration. We did set up pre-registration for the Zoom, so we will know how many people we expect to have uh attending remotely. And then we can gauge the audience based on in-person folks who are in the room at the start and uh determine how long we want to allow comment times for at the beginning of the hearing. We've advertised it up to five minutes. Um, so the planning commission does have flexibility there. And then uh, just a brief update on comments, I checked just before this meeting and we've only received one so far in the public hearing comment period. Um, I do want to ask the planning commission, the PDF document is pretty gnarly and long. Would it be easier if I just send the comments that we received during the comment period for the public hearing or do you still want everything sent to you?
I'm just the updated comments.
Great, I'm happy to pull those out, uh, so it's easier to navigate. And um, last quick update slash question is dietary preferences. I know we sent out a request for anyone who has dietary preferences. I think we only got one email back for vegetarian, so I just want to do a quick.
One vegan and one vegetarian.
Okay, vegan and vegetarian. Any gluten free or anything like that?
A little gluten free.
Okay, then we will accommodate those requests.
Does requesting Johnny Pops count as a dietary preference?
I thought Commissioner Pestinger was going to ask for uh Kobe.
I don't think that's in the budget.
My, one other clarifying question about the meetings. Uh, I look at it and it says special meeting five P M to six P M. Then open house, six P, well, open house and six P M to nine P M. I presume that means open house and public hearing. Could you just clarify, A, do we need to be there for the whole hour of the special meeting? Uh, what are we doing during the special meeting time? What happens during the open house time? Is the open house and the public hearing exactly at the same time?
Uh, so open house is five to six and you do not need to be there as a planning commissioner. You're welcome to come if you want to. Um, we will be there setting up the room and also there to answer questions from the public and then a hearing will start at six, which is a little bit earlier than our typical. Uh, planning commission meeting and it is advertised as such, so um start time is six. Six will open the public hearing or go through the rigor moral, the introductions, open the public hearing. Um, I'm not having any uh other minutes or anything like that on the agenda, so it'll just be. Like the general order of business, open introductions, public comment, public hearing and then close. Um, and it's that way for both Wednesday and Saturday, so uh, yes, show up shortly before six ten. Thanks. And that's it for my comments, so.
I, I would just encourage everybody to come to the open house if they can. The best public comment you'll ever get are in the personal conversations at an open house.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, and, and just so that I'm, I'm clear as the chair. That there is a time specific that the public hearing happens and we have to open it at that time, right? So.
That's correct. We, we will want to open it around six. Um, so it, the way we notice things is. At six or shortly thereafter, at ten or shortly thereafter, so there's a small time of flexibility. Um, but because we advertise these six to nine and ten to two, we will have to keep the hearing open the whole time for those days, so.
I remembered, I, I just glanced at those agendas, but there was, like you said, there was the, the agenda and the public comment. And then the public hearing, I think I remember it being like six ten or six fifteen.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I just gave a short wiggle room, so we can, um, I'll have to check the agenda again, but yeah, I think like six oh five or six eight is the actual public hearing start time.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Um. Do you may have a comment? Okay, then, oh, um, and just to maybe a show of hands, who all um. Is available and, and believes they'll be attending on the twenty third.
Somebody?
Um, and then on the twenty sixth. Okay, good, good, good. Okay, um, anything for the good of the order?
Maybe.
Maybe.
Just wanted to make sure our county friends knew that legal women voters hold a diversity, equity and exclusion summit on May tenth. Abbling or sharing flyers or submission.
Not sure if that was. I know our education outreach team, May is, May is prairie month, like every weekend there's been prairie stuff and so. If we're not there, it might be because of a conflict with.
What was the date? May tenth. Let's see if I've got a location here. I'm sure we can find it. May tenth, eight thirty A M to three thirty P M.
Thank you. Oh, that reminds me, the May seventeenth is, um, I think T C, uh, the climate action team is hosting. The climate convention at Evergreen State College.
I will be presenting on, having sequestration.
Terrific.
Be providing coffee.
And it's.
Okay.
Um, at Evergreen, I believe it's all day, eight to eight to six, maybe eight to five.
Definitely register if you want to go, because I think they have limited space.
Yeah.
I think it's filling up fast.
And they have, uh, they have scholarships available for paid registration.
Exactly. It's, it's fifty or seventy-five or something like that.
Yeah, they, they want to make it very like anyone can, can attend regardless of income level, so they're encouraged folks to use those scholarships.
Okay, well, having no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Close to on time too. Six minutes over. Despite a pretty extensive conversation.